Curtis is ready. Looks like Curtis is ready, so we'll call our meeting to order. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening? Hearing none, we're hearing a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion's support, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no, motion is carried. Rule has been taken.
Yes.
Thank you. Next up would be pledge of allegiance. If anyone agrees, join us in pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, we look to approve the minutes of the July 9, 2024 regular meeting and close session on that same date. Got a motion to support, any comments or questions, additions, deletions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no, motion is carried and those meeting minutes have been approved. Excuse me. Next, we are received or to receive a resident communications related to the proposed social district. This is included in your packet.
Support.
Got motion support, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no, motion is
No. I said no.
Okay. Motion is carried with one no.
Sorry.
No, no, no.
You're too fast for me. I was too slow.
Apologize for going too fast. I'll try and slow down. Uh, next, we'll move to recommendation of bids. Our first one would be consideration of resolution to receive bids and award a contract for the Pioneer Avenue Reconstruction Project, which is contract number one, to the recommended bidder and also to approve the related request for purchase and authorize the public services director to execute the contracts, contract documents on behalf of the city of Elma. And it looks like we got, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight bids. Looks like they're ranging from $3,196,580.70 all the way up to $3,652,000. That's it?
I'm sorry, that isn't what I meant to go. No, I. We can reset our communication. That's why I paused because I thought, we're doing that that early in the. So, yes, I will receive. Can you amend my no to her, or is it, I have to say no?
I don't know. I feel like if we want to rescind the original motion.
No, I, it's a fine, I mean, I don't want her
I mean, you passed anyway.
I know it did, but I didn't want
It's just a blind mark on your permanent record.
You just, however.
I know you were the keeper of permanent records on this road, so.
Goodness, I'm so sorry.
I apologize.
I can make a note that you didn't intend to, oh, now, if that will help.
Sure, whatever your notes need legally, I'm fine with it. I just, I got ahead of myself.
Fair enough.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for the disruption.
No, not a problem. So, our bids on the Pioneer Avenue project, I believe, ranged from like 3.652 million down to 3.196 and some change. And the lowest bidder is the recommended bidder, which is Kalen Construction of Sodas, Michigan. I'm not familiar with the town or the company, I'm afraid.
Almost three hours away.
Almost three hours away, okay. Nobody knows. What is your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Sorry. Okay, we have motion support, other comments, questions?
I had just asked if we had used this company before. Um, and we have not.
Dave?
I just, I have Dave before, and I mean, you can
Okay. No, it's good to get it on the record here. Dave can show, tell us about the background checks he did and, uh.
I'm a regional public services director. We reached out to local contractors, just, you know, I've talked with OHM, who's been our engineering firm that's helped us deal with this SRF project. They are a large highway construction outfit, and they're getting into the local streets based on what we're hearing. Um, they've got some over on the east side of the state, there's an office, well, the by Saginaw, that's a field office, and apparently they're getting into this type of work. I've heard nothing negative on them, so that's all I know, and because this was bid out through MDOT, and we really don't have much say in it, they are the local bid, so. And they're MDOT pre-qualified, so that's, that's the answer I can give you regarding that.
Okay.
Other than three hours, where is Sodas?
By
Grand Rapids.
By Grand Rapids. No, south and west of Grand Rapids.
Okay, thank you.
I think you can throw a stone to Indiana.
Oh, okay, that fired out, okay, very.
You said they've done other projects similar?
Yes, what, they've done main, major highway projects, large highway projects. Um, they have bid on a few local street projects over by the east side of the state Saginaw, Midland, that region, and from what I have heard, nothing bad. So, that's the most information I can say.
A new player in our region, then.
It certainly looks like it based on these bids and what I'm hearing from engineering companies.
Okay. Are there any more questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed would be no, the motion is carried, thank you. Next, we have considered a resolution to receive bids and award a contract for citywide infrastructure improvements, contract number two, to the recommended bidder and also to approve the related request for purchase and authorize the public services director to execute contract documents on behalf of the city of Elma. The following bids were received, and for this project, we had four, ranging from $9,418,699.05 all the way up to $16,738,632. The recommended bidder is a low bidder of $9,418,000, some change.
Move to approve.
Support. Got motion support? Comments or questions?
That's okay.
And that is Crawford is Mount Pleasant is the local bidder in this case.
He owns North Mount Pleasant.
Yeah, just North Mount Pleasant.
There's quite a big difference between the lower bid and the highest bid.
Yeah.
Based on my understanding of what's going on in the market, this is basically a tale of who has work, who does not have work right now. Based on what I understand, saying a little bit dumb, I apologize, this is all part of our SRF project. Publics have been watching that, have been watching commission meetings for the last, uh, eight months or so. This was the large-scale project, five contracts went out for award at the same time, and this is the result. So, there's several agenda items as a part of that SRF project, meaning state rolling funds. This is, this portion now is through the Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy through the SRF. Uh, from my understanding, Mally has won the St. Louis job, so these were all bid at the same time, and through the state's graces, they did allow us an extended time period for bidding simply because we're a small region. They extended it another week and a half because the companies that bid on it have to have bid bonds. These are such large jobs that they can only put their bid bonds on one project at a time, and if Elma and St. Louis were doing it at the same time, that would drastically reduce the ability to bid, so they gave us an extended duration. My guess is that number reflects that they've already won St. Louis. It's a feast or famine thing, and there's a lot of work out there, so they threw a large number at it going, hey, if we land it, we could probably sub it out to several different companies to bid, that's only an assumption on my part, at least on this. Pleasant see the numbers, they are good numbers, come on, we've seen.
Yep, well, it's something is. Any more comments or questions? Do we have motion on the table, so all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed would be no, motion is carried. Next, we are, excuse me, to consider a resolution to receive bids and award a contract for the water storage tank control building replacement project, contract number three in this case, which is to the recommended bidder, also to approve the related request for purchase and authorize the public services director to execute the contract documents on behalf of the city of Elma. And we had two bids for this one, ranging from $311,000 up to $412,960. The recommendation is to take a low bid from Corrigan Construction of Brighton, Michigan, for the $311,000. Your pleasure.
Move to approve.
Motion support, comments, questions? Background Dave?
Yep, this is for the water control storage building, water control building, excuse me, the base of the water treatment tower over on Jerome Road. Never worked with any of these companies, old construction does, however, have bid to do the waste unit construction project for this water plant. However, their bid was higher, so Corrigan wasn't one of the only companies that came in. They actually had several questions on it, went and visited the site three days before the bid was due, so it was pleasant to see their bid because they were a newcomer to the bidding.
Comments or questions? Is this gonna be bigger than the building that's currently there?
A little bit. Um, what you're familiar with right now, it looks big, it's a, and you kind of, you can call it a doghouse, what it looks like. And this will look similar to our wild house because it'll be, uh, four face block, green roof on metal, skating some metal roof on it, be more slightly, but also have stayed by generators, so in the event of a power outage, we don't have to take generators back and forth, so the water tower will always be in service. Overall, it's
Okay, thank you. Anything else? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no, motion is carried. We're on a roll. Number four, we consider a resolution to receive bids and award a contract for the 2024 water tower painting project. Our contract number four tonight, to the recommended bidder and also to approve the related request for purchase and authorize the public services director to execute the contract documents on behalf of the city of Elma. Following bids are received, in this case, we have five, ranging from $717,100 down to $468,000, which is the low bid and the recommended bidder of LC United from Sterling Heights, Michigan. Move to approve.
Support.
Motion support, comments or, Dave, I'll give you your background first.
This is a desperately needed project, we're thankful for this, as well as the water meters and the storage building because we wouldn't have the funds to do this if it wasn't for this SRF project. So, you see here, this is, um, gonna be first for me, probably first for a lot of people in the city of Elma because this is the first time that my now's will have to totally strip the paint off of it, cover the tower up, even get any potential white paint that's off of there. So, it'll be a time-consuming project, it's not simply cleaning and painting, this is actually to strip the old paint, paint new, there'll be a new city logo on there. So, it'll be dramatic change, you'll, this project, if you, um, when it starts two years from now, we're gonna do the control building at the base first.
That's what I was gonna ask, because what's the timeline?
Yes, because that existing building is connected to that tower, have that removed and done, so if you strip the old paint where that old, uh, control building was at, strip that paint off and resurface that because that part will then be exposed after that building's
So, summer 2026, yes, correct.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Just going, are we locked into that logo that was on a drawing we saw that sometime?
That was on the spec as a part of what the commission, we talked about several months ago, so that was what the commission chose, and that's what we went with. So, that was in the bid package.
We just use the, the current city logo and, and block letters that kind of match up with the, the Elma College, Elma.
I remember proving that saying whatever it was.
The slogan, make it yours.
Make it yours, yeah.
That was part of the packet that we sent out, that was an option to put that out there, so had some logo thing on it, so.
I don't remember that, I guess it's
It was, it was just part of my newsletter, it wasn't part of a, a agenda item.
So, is that locked in, I mean, with the contractor, we still had the ability to change that before the
Probably remove it, if we're gonna change it, it'd probably be a contract to change order, to change if there's anything else, you change or probably remove it, but.
I am just curious, because I think last time we went through like the change of the logo, that round thistle and all that, I mean, the chamber was in yeah, it was a kind of a deal, but a lot of info was taken, I don't know where this came from. Just a thought. If there's any interest in changing that.
It was using the, it was just the, it's the city logo we have now, that's what we, we have up
Would that make it yours isn't part of anything we're using currently, is it?
It's just on a website, it's on the moniker, I think, website, you know, but that's, like Dave said, that could be, that's a big issue, I think we ruled that out, it's a TV.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no, motion is carried, thank you. Moving on to number five, consideration of resolution to accept the sole bid, which was received June 26, 2024, and award a contract for the city of Elma Water Meters Meter Replacement Project, contract number five tonight, to Ferguson Water Works of Kentwood, Michigan, for a total bid of $1,478,705.89 and to also approve the related request for purchase and authorize the public services director to execute the contracts on behalf of the city of Elma. Your pleasure.
Move to approve.
Support. Okay, we have motion support, background Dave?
Uh, this was part of what SRF project to replace the meters. Uh, this was bid out, we had, uh, six, seven bid of different bidders, uh, excuse me, plan holders on this. We have only received one bid, several companies, four that are known, our closest one is in Ohio, the other one was in Kentucky, uh, another one was Texas, or it was Florida. So, my guess is we reached out to a couple to find out, the four, we got responses back from two of them. Uh, one was, uh, one response we received back from Fisher Companies, which owns Fisher Asphalt, Mount Pleasant, or, excuse me, Central Asphalt. They pulled plans, but they decided that they did not want to bid on this because of going into homes and intricacies that would deal with, they didn't want to deal with homes. They also found that they could not compete with the prices because it's a prevailing wage bid project, and they could not compete with that, so. That was their reason, and another company that was reached out to, mentioned, oh, excuse me. Corr and Main, we reached out to them, and they called back stating that they couldn't meet specs within the bid, so those are the two that we got back the responses. So, for whatever reason, we got one bid back received on this.
Okay, questions? Okay, um, and I did send an email asking for more information on this a couple different times, and frankly, I, you know, when I read the agenda, I'm sort of going through the packet here, you know, anytime you don't get, you only get one bid back, it kind of raises my, kind of flags a little bit, and, uh, so that really piqued my interest in why we only got one, because we typically get multiple bids on things. Um, starting to look at it, you know, I've got the information from Eric, you supplied it, the, apparently we spec this out so that basically for one company to bid on it, it looked like, to me, I mean, we specified it down to the specific equipment. Um, you know, I read this letter that was put out as part of the, I guess it's a letter to the Michigan Environmental, Department of Energy, Environmental Great Lakes Energy, and they apparently gave us the permission, we need to seek their permission for the process. I guess I, why did we spec it? I have trouble to respect this project down to that detail that only one person could bid on it.
Okay. Uh, we bid it based on history of, we've been in the meter replacement business for time limit here. And we tried, in our understanding, in our world, there's four different meters that we've looked at. This is the culmination of about seven years of meter research, um, and I can list off the names of the companies. Uh, this particular meter is Neptune, and this is one source that sells them and does this type of conversion. There are several companies that deal with Neptune meters, that's part of, I believe, who bid on this. My guess is they are Neptune installers, but I probably looked at, it's the company from Ohio, this is only an assumption on my part. They do nationwide replacements, so when they saw the company was closer to Michigan, they said, well, we've got plans, but now we see it's on the plan holders list, we're not gonna bid on this. So, that company is Neptune meters, and based on seven years of trials of different brands of meters and researching how the utility billing comes about with this, is why we sought out State of Michigan to find out, can we sole source this? State of Michigan historically is not fans of that, but if you can justify the reasons why, they will accept it because they're concerned about that two, one bid and that type of thing. So, we have dealt with Neptune meters, Zener meters, Sensis meters, is which one we currently have the majority of because we do have some that are mixed throughout the system throughout these trials, and Badger meters. And based on staff's recommendation and in their trials, they have tried Badger meters back in the early 2000s, 2000 eras. Those meters, from what our experience is, they are 100% made of plastic and they're not durable. We had several issues with the ones that we tried that broke. Sensis meters is what we currently have, and Sensis meters have been, have worked for us, however, they're at the end of their useful service life. So, when we analyze the utility billing, if you go with Sensis meters, you have to use their proprietary data collection system, theirs and theirs alone. Another one is, it's, um, cellphone-based. So, if you ever change meters in the future, you're gonna have to change your billing and all that, so it's not just a one-stop shop thing. Zener meters, we were confident by, based on about seven years ago, that we liked designer, we had at least 20 of them in the system, and of those 20, we've only got, I believe, two left because they have failed for every number of reasons. Um, most of their problems inaccurate readings from what we have seen. The other big reason is they use batteries, just like the Sensis replacements, they use batteries. Those batteries, they'll tell you they have a 20-year life, but when you talk to the sales reps, about seven to 10 years, you need to start replacing them. They are prorated, and they have a warranty for 10 years, but it's prorated, so it's not 100% free replacement in that 10 years, based on how many years it's been in service. So, you're in our timeline with those two types of meters because they have batteries, that's how they function. With Zener meters, with the data collection system, you have to have receiver pods set up all around the city. The same thing with, you'd have to have that to collect, you'd have to have different stations to collect data. We had two trial locations, and if we went citywide, we'd have to have some in each neighborhood for data collection. So, the Neptune meters that we have tried, those ones do not require batteries to work on. The reason why the two others need batteries is because, if I were to bring one in and show you, there's a digital receiver on the top, and there's two wide open holes, and that battery sends an electrical pulse across the meter, and that's how it detects how much water's going across. Once that battery fails, you can replace it, but for another, I think it's, uh, the numbers that we, this is a couple of years old now. The meter itself is like 240 bucks, to replace the battery, you're at 140 to 160 to replace the battery. And within seven to 10 years, you should look to start replacing them, they'll have them on a replacement cycle. I don't know where the finances are gonna be in 10 years, that puts us under a timeline to replace these two types of meters because as the batteries fail, you have to have a plan and finances to start replacing them. Put in a brief synopsis, the current meters that we have are anywhere from 30 to 40 years old, they haven't been replaced. The Neptune meters don't require batteries, so based on where our finances are, for the next 20, 30, 40 years, we're not under the radar nor under pressure to replace these, there's no battery that they run on. This is a traditional mechanical meter. It's one of the last of its type because they are going to digital ones. You don't, it doesn't require cellphone signal to do the battery or to do the data collection. It's not proprietary to a cellphone company because after 10 years, you have a contract with the cellphone provider for 10 years, and after that, you have to negotiate that contract. Based on our experience with the municipalities we've talked to, that's wonderful, but when you start to go to negotiate that in 10 years, guess who has the leverage? They own the data, so anytime you want any utility building information, you're locked under contract. The history says 10 years is what that contract is. So, if you say, no, thanks, we can't afford the data collection, you're in the meter replacement business again. So, Neptune meters don't require battery, you can read them with anybody else's software, so we're not stuck with the Neptune brand. That, and based on our history, the Neptune meters have been tried and true, failed safe for the last five to seven years we tried them. The Zener meters, the ones that we really like to begin with, didn't collect data right, and then the first problem where this had a trial advocacy was built, they had the first large-scale brand-new one, and it broke after about 10 months to 12 months. We've replaced it with a replacement, the replacement was extremely inaccurate, so we sent it back, we've now replaced it with a Neptune meter. We have about 20 Neptune meters in the system, haven't had any issues with them, so that's why we like the idea of going with Neptune meters. This is based on staff's experience and recommendations, so that's why we decided to try to see if we could sole source this with a Neptune brand. We're not loyal to whoever sells it, we just like the brand based on experience and based on the best possible option for long-term future for the city's finances. Number two is, this still allows us to go out and do data collection without having to send a field tech out. We put in what's called a data collection device in the water services truck. Within two to four hours, we can collect the entire city just driving around, it just collects it as you're driving around. You don't have to go out and touch each house, you don't have to have a person walking around, so that potentially frees up a part-time position in the water.
Thank you.
Okay. Dave? Questions?
Good research.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no, and I will know. And now, um, moving on down, resolutions. Consider a resolution exempting City of Elma from requirements of PA 152 of 2011 for the benefit plan year January 1 through December 31, 2025. Your pleasure.
Move to approve.
Got motion support?
This is your, yep, that's a yearly, yearly thing we do, um, this gives us, uh, staff a option to the hard caps of 80/20 premiums. Uh, we do offer a PPO program that has a higher deductible at 10% premium, so that's what we'll be able to afford to do uh, for those employees that like to go with that option, so that's why we opt out of this, but we don't do anything other than this, so.
Okay. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no, motion is carried, thank you. Next, agreements, consideration of resolution to approve an agreement with Spicer Group for ASNEDGIS, which is a geographic information system services for assessing department in the amount of $5,500 and to approve the required, related request for purchase. Your pleasure.
Move to approve.
Support. Got motion support?
Um, this is a, an up to amount, we might not use maybe 2,500 of it, but this is an up to amount for the assessing department. Uh, the current GIS, um, is moving off the hardware into the cloud and, like everything else is, you'll need these, these, um, tools to be able to use the software, you won't be able to do it on, on-site anymore. Uh, we do not have, you know, staff to, uh, we don't have IT staff or that sort of thing to deal with these things on a daily basis, so, um, we've had this contract with Spicer to provide those services to get this, um, usable for us with the, the new technologies.
Okay. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no, motion is carried, thank you. Next, reports of officers, boards, and committees, the commissioner may re, receive any of the following reports by one resolution or any commissioner may move any item within this section for individual discussion and vote. Before us tonight, we have the June 2024 building permits report, the Elma Transit June 2024 report, the city manager's report. Your pleasure.
Receive one and two.
Support.
Okay. Got motion support, comments or questions? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no, motion is carried. Need to receive three.
Right.
Got motion support, Eric?
Yes, very, very limited tonight, just, um, wanna say thank you to the Healthy Pine River, um, committee and specifically Chuck Sandro, I've been working with him and our staff and, and the college and everybody to put together a, um, grant agreement uh, through the Michigan Environmental Justice Impact Program, uh, that was submitted last week. Uh, we asked for $248,000, that number might sound familiar, to be applied for the exact amount for a feasibility study underneath another program for the, the dam and the impoundment. Um, so just wanted to say thanks to, to the group and just specifically Chuck, and I was speaking with Chuck, uh, yesterday. Um, the upcoming August meeting with the Healthy Pine River Group ends August 8th, which is a Thursday. Um, they would like to invite the commission to come to that, that's, um, starting at 6:00 PM, they're gonna have a cookout. What they'd like to do is after, have a bite to eat, um, walk down to the impoundment bridge and kind of discuss, um, the nuances of, of the positive feasibility, feasibility study, looking at what's currently there with the dam, the impoundment, uh, the parks, um, and the brownfield, which is what was the Iron Metal Site, uh, to the north, so if, uh, if any are available, please let me know, and we'll get a little Chuck and, um,
What time was that, I mean?
It's 6:00 PM, August 8th, that is, is a Thursday. That's their next, um, monthly meeting. So, uh, but if you're, if you're available to go, more than a mayor here, I'll let them know, and we'll just meet right at the library, it's split there.
Library, okay.
No meeting location. Um, we talked about the neighborhood street projects here tonight, um, uh, the ones that Dave talked about for the Crawford projects, um, the street surface and curbs, sidewalks, those are all paid for with our neighborhood street funding, uh, that's voted on with the public every six years, 3.5 mil, um, mils. Um, also part of that, um, we are actively doing crack sealing and chip sealing throughout the community. Uh, we have 11 streets, um, that are being chip sealed, um, that will be started here in this next month, and 32 streets that will be seeing crack sealing, uh, throughout the community, so just wanted to put that out there, that the dollars that we're receiving for that, we're getting it out there and getting it, um, installed, so. And then lastly, uh, a big, another big project downtown, uh, we are rebuilding, uh, lot number seven, uh, which is behind the, the Brave Howard, um, and Nichols Financial, um, block there, and our contractor is telling us we're looking at the end of August, early September to have that, that completed, and just, just a reminder that, that does include a dumpster enclosure to clean things up back there, and also, um, putting in the conduit, um, if and when, um, it's appropriate to add, um, charging stations for vehicles, so that stuff will be ready.
Good. Okay. Who has questions?
Hey, Dave. Eric, would you like to talk about the, you gonna say it was redundant?
Oh, yes, 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 I have that here, yes, um, we received, um, some very good news, I know the commission's been excited about this project being complete. Um, the wastewater treatment plant, um, has removed all gaseous chlorine product from the property. Disinfection from this point forward shall be accomplished through the sodium clo, hypochlorite, roughly 15% solution. Hypochlorite is a much safer way to disinfect our treated water prior to discharging to the Pine River, so that is complete, we are
The system is off, the product has been removed.
The project's not done, but we're now working on our temporary feeds until the project is done and the tape is installed, but yes, there's no chlorine, we took all of our chlorine monitoring equipment and everything is
We took all of our chlorine monitoring equipment and everything is now gone. So it's a thing of the past. There's no silver, there's no nothing.
Yeah. So there's no, there's no opportunity for something to go wrong.
Great, great news.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's literally a time bomb sitting there. Glad to see you gone.
Good news.
Thank you.
And that's all you have.
Okay. No questions? All those in favor, receipt of the city manager's report, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion is carried and we've received it. Finished business. Prepare to consider a resolution approving traffic control number 161 to provide no parking along the westbound lane of West Superior Street from the center line of Harvard Avenue, 82 feet to the, to the east, excuse me. It says this order will increase the distance from nearest parking stall along the westbound lane of West Superior Street to improve the site distance for vehicular traffic on Harvard Avenue. And the accidents statistics are in your packet here. And at that intersection, we had, what?
10.
10 over four years. And we've had one or two on the other two intersections that we looked at. Is that, I guess, is that a fair, okay, we got, okay, we got motion support. How many parking spots is that?
Because when you go up there and look at it, there's already a gap between the curb and the first parking spaces. We'll remove one full parking space.
I was going to try to take some pictures of that, but since the last meeting, those parking spots have not been filled because of the college being down, it's been almost empty out there. But I did, I took some pictures earlier, but they were, had pictures of my thumb and all kinds of stuff on them. I did, the things that are important about that intersection is that that is, that intersection is part of the highest ground in the city of Alma. It's downhill, okay, from both ways, especially coming up from the railroad tracks. So vehicles are in a lower plane than they are. But I did, in order to see past a car that was there, I had to have the nose of my car into the travel lane before I could see a car that was around, that was parked in that end section, ends down section, so. I've had to come up real abrupt there more than once, cars parked there, so.
Anybody else? Comments or questions?
This data was great to get. So thank you for that.
All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no? And I would vote no. But the motion is carried. Thank you. Next on the agenda is appropriations. Any interest in paying the bills tonight?
An approval to pay the appropriations.
Very motion support. Are there any comments or questions? Are you none? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Mr. Comments? Uh, what's in, you want to leave us up tonight?
I just want to apologize for burning out and knowing we're receiving them. On the agenda Friday night and apparently forgot since then. So my apologies. I'm not paying attention.
Not a problem.
Nothing else.
Roger.
The children's workshop that has been done by Grasset County Players since I can remember has hit it out of the park again this year. The kids are producing Bye Bye Birdie, which is a play that we did 40 years ago with Grasset County Players. In fact, my son was birdie in that one. But this is littler kids than we are kind of used to having. There's smaller kids, there's a wealth of kids coming up in the theater. They are just doing a bang up job with it. If you can, it opens on the second, third, second, third, fourth, whenever the next weekend is. Get out and see them and support these kids. They're doing a marvelous job and you'll enjoy it. It's a fun play.
Thank you, Roger. All right.
I didn't know what Roger said. I hope you come out and support the youngsters. They're doing a great job. That's it.
Michelle.
Grasset County Fair starts.
Yes.
And we've got tall kids with all their animals and products.
Should be fun. Andrew.
Just always the third supporter here of the theater. Duke it out and get your tickets to Bye Bye Birdie. I know those tickets are on sale.
Thank you. Sarah? What's up?
Just remind people to like the Park and Rec Facebook page for all the information on the different activities happening. Please try to go to them as when you can or encourage other folks to, to go because that's how we'll know if it's, it's worthwhile to continue after our funding runs out and finding a way to do that. Then secondly, we have a lot of activities coming up in the next month. Michelle mentioned the, the fair already, but we also have the 151st anniversary of the fire department.
Yes.
On August 16th, it will be a downtown light parade. And then the next day, from 11 to 4, is open house here at the fire hall. So hopefully you can do that. And then right after you're done there, you can go downtown to Alma Live, which will start at 4 o'clock and go till 10:00 PM that evening, so. And then the following week is the US 127th tour downtown, so lots of things happening.
We also have the high school, all class three.
Yes, and, yes, yes, 18th.
Do you know what time the parade is for the five friends?
It'll be at dusk, so that time of year probably.
8:30, 9:00?
8:30-ish, yeah, quarter to nine.
I assume they're probably going to push it as early as they can because they, I'm sure they want kids. And reminds me, there is a block, and I think it's between Park and Prospect, where they're not going to use sirens. So if you've got children or anything, you want a little quieter place. I'm going to verify that I got the right block in there, but I know, I do remember there's a section where they weren't going to use their sirens that some people don't, some kids and animals don't care for that, so. It's a thoughtful piece of that, I thought.
Yes, that was.
Yeah. That's everything.
That's everything for me, yes.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. I agree with everything said, support the theater and that and everything's going on and lots of things. And ton of stuff going on at the library, too. When you look at the calendar, there's a ton of stuff going on there. There's things all, all over the place. I did want to go back, you know, one of the reasons I voted no on water meter projects was I don't like single sourcing. I think we over expect, you know, the bidding process on that. It happened before to us, like a fire truck when we get a little overzealous and decide what we want. I think we've missed an opportunity to learn. I mean, some of the facts that Dave gave were good, that's, you know, answered a number of my questions, but I still think there's an opportunity to learn. You talk about, you know, you did testing on models that you got in 2020, that's before that even, 2000, early on. Those things are older, things change. And I think we missed an opportunity to learn from the various vendors as they're coming and presenting their projects and reading about them. I think we do miss out on perhaps at least an educational portion of it, which would be good for staff to go through the exercise if nothing else. And the other thing is sometimes you find out that, you know, what you thought was best isn't, so. That was really my biggest concern with that, so. It bothers me when we only see one bid. With that, I think that's all of my comments, so. Let's see, we do have, well, it's open up to the public and then we do have a closed session planned for later tonight, so. At this point, if any members of the public would like to address the commission, please go to a podium, state your name and address. You have up to five minutes to share your thoughts with the commission. Who would like to be first?
Good evening. My name's Dave Rappis and I'm the Grasset County 911 Director. And my purpose tonight is just to come by and say first, hi. I haven't been here yet. I haven't been anywhere yet. I've been here about a year and I've been working diligently to get us back up and shaved down with the 911 Center. My second purpose is to inform you, I'm sure you've seen it all over, the Grasset County 911 Center is going for a millage on the 6th for some much needed technology improvements for our center. Our center is strictly right now funded by surcharge, the $3 off your phone bill, which has been that way since 2018, which is the state mandated or the state allocated highest fund that we can do for, for charging for 911. We get a little bit of training money from the state off of that $3, but that's it. Since then, our budget hasn't changed. As far as money coming in, it's probably actually gone down, but the expenses have gone up over and over and over every year, just like everything else and everywhere else. With that being said, capital improvement projects have been neglected over the last five to six years. Certain things such as new computer aided dispatch system. We've been trying to replace some radios here and there that we can for all the public safety for police and fire. Our biggest concern right now is the tower, or actually the radio reception in Alma, St. Louis and the northwest quadrant of this county is very shaky. A lot of times it's digital, it's understandable, it's a public safety risk and it's an officer's safety risk as well for our first responders. To fix that problem, we're biggest capital project is a tower to be located up behind the Old Comfort Inn at 46 Nalder, so that we can get this fixed and resolved for the areas such as Alma and St. Louis and the northwest area of this county. We're also need infrastructure inside the building, servers, computers, monitors, all of that needs to be replaced. It hasn't been replaced in the last five years. They've been using the reserve funds to balance their budget for the last five years and that is now dried up, basically. So what we're trying to do with this millage is make sure that we don't have to come to townships, villages, commissions and say, hey, we need money helping us run our 911 Center here. If it were to not pass, we would have to take a loan possibly for next year. And then after that, we would have to look at other funding methods that could happen. I've been out at farmer's markets, I've been here in Alma, I've been in St. Louis, I've been in different places. I'll be at the fair all week if you want to stop by and say hi. And the cost is .6 mil for six years. And those that have $160,000 house, $96 a year or $8 a month, which is less than what I paid for my lunch I'm wearing apparently today from McDonald's. So we ask for your support if you can. I know that the early voting is out there and the T is all coming up. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer any of them.
Thank you very much. And who would like to be next?
I'm David Menez, I'm a 518 mechanic. I think I know half of you, but, so what I've been meaning to come in for, works kept me, kept me from making it in for these meetings, but last year, I think it was August and September, the, on the docket for discussion was deer management here in Alma. And there was a DNR packet that included like, you know, having managed hunts, you know, proving that you have, you know, sharpshooter prowess or hiring a sharpshooter. There was all that activity that was looked at and then it was brought up again in September and then to my knowledge, it fell off the radar. And naturally deer were only hitting grills of vehicles, not eating people's gardens. So that's my reason for coming. You know, obviously I live on that end of town. My in-laws live on this end of town over by the high school and they see 30 to 60 deer at night and that's not even exaggerated. So, and, and we planted gardens at both places, doesn't matter how, I mean, garden is, is the main driver behind this. It's not that deer aren't cute to look at, you know, wandering in the wilderness, obviously, but it's the, the aspect of how much they're doing damage. You know, you look at farmers in the perimeter of here, they get a block permit, they just kill the things and stack them up a pile in the backyard. I'm not saying that, but you know, where did that leave off, I guess, is the question? And if it did just die off, can we reinvigorate the conversation to look at, you know, what is the best solution here? Because it's, it was disheartening when you spend a lot of time and labor putting, putting together a massive garden, doesn't matter how much fencing you put up, and these things trample it and mow stuff to the ground. You know, so it's, it's at a certain point where, you know, asking, hey, city help? Hey, I'm personally more than happy to help, whether that is prove that I can sharpshoot the things and, and take them out or, you know, at a certain point, you know, get a trailer, lure the things and I'll, I'll take them out of town. I don't care about what the DNR has to say about that, but it's, it's excessive, you know, in, in town, you're seeing 30 to 60 deer a night. Where I hunt at my parents, five miles outside of St. Louis, we don't see, in hunting season, prime hunting season, you see two deer a season, you know, so it's, it's a pretty extreme amount of deer we have here. So that's, that's just where I'm at, the questions I, I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I would suggest maybe Eric, can I talk to Eric outside of this meeting? It kind of did die off, fell off our radar, you know, what we talked about. I remember a lot of conversations, excuse me, but. Hey, Matt, who would like to be next? Anybody else to carry or just the commission tonight?
Would it be okay if I handed commissioners that weren't here last time the same prints?
Certainly.
Pictures?
Yeah.
If I have two copies left, I'm not sure what to do, but.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can figure, but I'll do the best I can. All right, I'll rush you, just tell me when it's time, I'll, I'll stop.
Thank you.
So my name is Jason Sumraks, I live at 933 Charles Avenue. I was here two weeks ago with my fence that I've been getting ticketed for. This all started back last year, July, when I sent that print that I just handed to the two commissioners in regards to, to my, I got a letter from the city saying that, that I was in violation, but I started with that print that we sent. Keith Coldwood sent that print somewhere on May 12th to Christine and David Ringel at 10:59 AM, showing them that we wanted to put up a fence for our kids' basketball, who, it clearly says in there a 12-foot chain link fence on there that was received. That was in Christine's hand when she handed Dave the, or handed Keith Coldgreen side up the actual permit to get the driveway put in. So we know that the city received it. He asked in that email, and I have a copy of the email here, if there's any issues with the project and it was not responded to. So Keith went ahead with the project. I talked to Eric about the project as well. He didn't want to come out to the house, said he trusted us to do that. That all started, our projects were on July 24th of, of last year is when I received a letter from my car saying that I was in violation with, with the fence. And so to our surprise, after thinking we do our due diligence, we, we went into action of what we do to solve it, had a meeting with Eric and my car. And that meeting, I thought went well. We all agreed to work together to try to come up with a solution to the fence, the city property borders, the north part of the fence area. We talked about even trying to buy some land there and we tried, we talked about netting, we talked about all kinds of solutions to try to solve it. Basically, I was told I would not be flying as long as we were in, in, in conversation with, with that. Around, I had until August 14th, according to the letter, to, to correct it or I'd be paying fines. After coming, figuring out we never were going to reach any solutions, I decided to go to the zoning board of appeals. Went to the zoning board of appeals and in that meeting for the zoning board of appeals, I was told that I couldn't schedule that date for a date that I could be there, so I sent attorney. My attorney, after leaving that zoning board of appeals, we were ultimately denied, but he had made a comment in the letter he sent to me that I, the board made it very clear, the zoning board made it very clear to dislike that there was, mentioned numerous times that had I come to the planning commission before installing the fence to make sure it was in compliance instead of coming later and asking for forgiveness. I was able to respond, he was able to respond about the timing of the request. So basically, he was making a note that they, they mentioned the zoning board several times that I just didn't come in advance. I just put up the fence and asked for forgiveness later, which is completely not true. I did present to the city. I did talk to Eric and ultimately I put up the fence based on their permission. So there were board members that did raise a motion to grant the variance, at which other board members had immediately, and the city attorney spoke up and said that they shouldn't. He influenced the board heavily. So after that happened, I thought I've received a letter. My, my attorney noted here that the board should be sending you, me a letter informing of the decision. The letter should contain information on your appeal rights pursuant to MCL 125.3606. I never received that. So I, I called Eric and said, Eric, you know, within early January, after the meeting was in late December, and I said, Eric, what's next, what are we doing here? He said, we were denied. Your wife knows that because she was there. And I said, I understand, but what happens next?[1773.32] And I said, I understand, but what happens next? I get the letter from the city saying that I should do something and what should I do and when should I do it? And Eric said, well, you should have got a letter, you need to check your mail. And I said, Eric, I've checked the mail multiple times, I didn't get this letter. What do we do? And he said, well, I'll have my car send you the note and let you know what we need to do. And I said, well, do me a favor. I said, it's been like nine or 10 days since the day you told me you sent it. Please give me a day and some time to go ahead and take the fence down. At this point, I'm agreeable. And I was somewhat agreeable throughout the whole thing. We were going back and forth what we could do. So I was agreeable to take the fence down. And so later on, I got an email from my car saying, here's your letter, hand your ticket. I got a ticket. Eric didn't mention a ticket on the phone. And so I was shocked by the ticket. So that started me calling the contractor, Keith Colwell, asking, hey, we're getting this fence on, I'm getting ticketed every two weeks at this point. The snow flying is cold, so Keith said he was having trouble getting ahold of, is that five minutes?
Fire instance is up.
Is it really?
Yeah. Very slow.
I guess I'll just keep coming back.
Timekeeper.
That's so fast, I don't have time to get to my story, but I guess that's what it is.
Thank you. Anybody else care to address the question tonight?
Luke Florrie with OHM Advisors. With the approval tonight of the construction contracts for all this work for the SRF, I just wanted to give an update on some of the next steps with SRF. SRF, they will be doing a order of approval. They'll give you a summary of all the costs, not just the construction costs we talked about tonight, but there'll be the engineering costs as well and bond council cost and contingency line item. And so that'll make up your loan amount. So with that information, then you will go through with your bond council, continue that process so that you can close on your loan. We anticipate the loan closing to be the end of August. After that, you're ready to do the agreements with all of these contractors and move forward. Some contractors may want to start in the fall, depending on, you know, what the weather looks like, I don't know. But that's essentially what's left now to get everything moving forward. If anyone has any questions on the process at all?
We've been through it pretty thoroughly, but if anybody had questions, I'll give time. Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Appreciate all your work on it.
Yes.
Various projects, I just want... Anybody else care to address the commission?
Dave Ringel, Public Services Director. A little bit of a segue, there could be a possibility, just to let everybody know, if you're on camera, now, some of these projects may start this fall based on contractor availability. I became aware in the last two weeks and some of these are awarded, some are ready to get up and going, their falls are looking empty. So we anticipate, based on water grid replacements, those will likely start at some point this fall, we're hopeful. We will be done over the winter time to have those replaced. So that one I would anticipate being one of the first ones to start, but once bond council and everything has gone through their approvals, that's when we can start those conversations. Part of that also, if everybody remembers, there was at least 125 to 130 water service line replacements. Those may occur this fall as well, based on availability of funds and project approvals. So those will be the ones I would anticipate starting. The other one, as far as heavy construction, we'll be in contact with several neighborhood meetings with folks, different neighborhoods, based on how, when we anticipate those to start. Once you know more information, we'll be in touch with all those local, those regions of construction. So thanks a little for bringing that up. Appreciate it.
Thank you. One more time, is there anybody else who would like to address the commission?
Does Bonnie count as the same as me?
She does, she is a separate person. I don't think she's part of you, so she can...
Do you want to take it from where I left off, just follow the conversation with, or you want to wait until next meeting and we'll do it together?
Can I read it easily? I mean, we're not...
It's not easy, but it's my verbiage.
Maybe we should wait until next time.
We'll do, we'll do.
My question was always that you were willing to give him some more time last time. What's the change apart on this time? If we can finish it?
We have been advised by council that we are in danger of setting a precedent that would need to be carried forward and could be detrimental for the future, you know, the proceedings that we, and how we handle our meetings. So we've chosen to, you know, we've got the five minute limit for a reason and unfortunately, you know, so we don't get tied up here. Sometimes it's just...
Didn't she allow him to defer her time? Does that work from a public comment perspective? Can't she defer to speak for two seconds and defer her time?
Perhaps, I guess I'm not authoritarian enough to know that for sure.
I know, I haven't answered that.
Whether it applies here or not.
Thinking back to model UADs 20 years ago, but...[1742.12]